Yeah, and so I would say, um. We always do classes in the morning that I will try to do power photos of a little. So, in a lot, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Like you were for, um, nine thirty.
Uh, also, uh, Brandon, tell me, uh, um. Okay, did you, did that work for you?
It was bad.
Okay, well, I didn't know because I never know if those are right or wrong. That's been tried a long time. Okay, perfect.
Good morning, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is June seventh already, two thousand twenty-two, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Stone. And we will go into a review of this.
I move we, uh, pay the bills to properly present them through.
I will second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve and pay the bills as they have been reviewed. Commissioner Price, Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we have, it shows we have nothing from the assessor's office.
Yes.
Uh, Debbie.
But that is incorrect. Yes, Debbie.
Good morning, I'm here on behalf of the county to present our, um, personal property and real estate land books to be signed under the current place.
Commissioner, I think that was the appointment.
That was actually the appointment, yeah.
That's, that's okay, okay.
That's all right, Debbie.
Thank you so much.
It is the, uh, employee, uh, authorization discussion on the solid plan. Uh, I believe that will come forward next week.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we have the motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two real estate and personal property land book, open certificates.
I move this time that we approve the these nine books. Sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-two real estate and personal property land books. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. And I know there's places on here for us all three to sign, so we'll just work. Go ahead and do that real quick. There's a second one here. All right, um, we'll go ahead with our nine thirty-one. Joe Lurie, our facilities manager, with an update.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
And good morning, everybody. I would like to start off to propose to the commissioners to upgrade the system, the AC system at the animal shelter. I would like to, I would like the commissioners to know that they have a choice in the upgrade that, and that you all may remember, we've worked on the, uh, upgrade for a while. We had the good folks down at Cumberland from Aircon Engineering do the engineering, and they have set forth the proposals. Now, they pass out time. These are the prices of the systems. The, uh, first page. So if we take the animal shelter as a whole, and it will be divided in two sections right in half, the system that is there now will very, can do the office and the conference room. And there's two offices and the, uh, the lobby. So if you, the system there now, uh, can take care of that. The system there now was added to and to try to do the whole building, and it couldn't. So the first price that you receive is to upgrade the existing system, and that is just the furnace, the air hole, and the outside condenser, and the new line set. And the price without taxes is forty-seven eighty-seven. The second paper that I gave the commissioners is the price of the new system for the second half of the building, and it is fifty-eight fifty-six forty-nine. The third price that I provided for the commissioners is the duck work, and I have taken the tax off and ripped the total down, is thirteen ninety-one twenty-two. So the fourth paper is on your, is the second bid that we, that Kathy got and we received some time ago from H.E. Newman to do the entire system, and as you see, that is labor included. So if we cut that in half, take, you know, if we, if we was to cut their bid in half, it'd still be much more than us doing it. Now, I would like to add to the commissioners that we would, I would like to do this in-house, and I would believe that it would take approximately forty hours to be safe with one person, and twenty hours with, uh, two people helping the one person. So I think that we could definitely do it in one week timeframe, working with the nice folks at the animal shelter. And they're very cooperative, and they've already told me that they could get this up out of the way, and they could, you know, they could make sure that nothing was in our way, and that we could all work together with the animals and their safety and their, and the atmosphere. And where we would be adding the system to the animal shelter is away from the animals and the staff. So that would be helpful as well.
So this pricing here.
Yes.
All of this combined is just materials and labor.
So combined, so combined without labor, the way we calculate it would be twelve thousand and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay.
And, and that, you know, of course, you all would have the labor and me and probably Mark.
Right.
To install the system.
My question is, is from start to finish, you're anticipating forty hours if you have Mark helping you?
Uh, who, uh, just to be safe, Commissioner, it'd be me forty and him twenty.
Okay, and then, um, we have everything, all the other responsibilities of the buildings taken care of during that time?
So, so that would only have us both there, just probably, to be honest, Commissioner, probably be together only ten hours.
Okay.
So one or the other of us, or Danny, could take care of the.
Okay. The, the cost savings is amazing.
You bring up a very good point, there's a lot of work orders coming in and all the processing.
And small staff and.
Exactly.
That's a huge chunk of money that you're saving by doing it in-house. We just have to make sure that we have the other things covered moving forward.
All the folks and all the work orders and the grass, and you're exactly right, it's very busy.
I, I'm sure, Joe, you know the places you could stop and go take care of other things and move on.
That's a very good point. And with the system in place right now, and we have took measures for, like, the cat room is the farthest away from the AC now. Like, we got them a portable AC unit in the interim while we was, you know, doing our due justice to make sure we're doing the right thing for the animal shelter.
Yeah.
So that we didn't have to hurry, that we could try to make all the animals and all the staff comfortable while we was trying to, you know, do our debate and do it right.
Is it a recommendation that we do the whole thing at once?
I recommend, I recommend, uh, Commissioner Price, since the unit there now is like ten years old, and it's not a brand name, I would like to also add to condition, to the commissioners that this is brand name equipment, that the parts are more readily available, it has a ten-year warranty on all that stuff, so, so. So with that being said.
I have one other question.
Yeah, how?
Um, you know, the animal shelter and the direction that it's going continues to do very well. Um, does this system at all allow for any expansion, or does it just cover the current square footage of?
No, ma'am, this would be the current square footage. Now, I, I did not ask the engineer where we is at on the square feet versus the, the cooling load, but this was designed, to answer your question, this was to design for the space.
For the space, that's it, okay.
And that is a very good question, you know. You know, wherever you could expand, I don't know at this point that that's current.
As I say, it's all the tiny now, I mean.
You seen, you seen that this configuration used up all the room that you have.
Hmm, yeah, I was gonna say, otherwise you could cut off, going around building anything else.
So, so commissioners, with that being said, I would like to make a proposal to draw the money out of the Ryan's Fund, just the twelve thousand and, and thirty-seven dollars out of the Ryan's Fund, with which Mr. Joe Halver, with the help of Ms. Mace, I call her the Queen Bee, with the help, I propose that the commissioners would make a motion, and that they would, they would draw the, the money out of the Ryan's Fund just for the price of materials for the animal shelter AC upgrade.
Makes sense.
I've got that, uh, that motion here.
You have it in front of you?
Uh, just, just a moment. But, uh, this is a, we're gonna transition from my name to Mr. Halvers. I'm a Ford West Banker today. So in your motion today, we're moving it from your county administrator to your county coordinator. And, uh, Dave has a motion to that.
And that makes this motion legit, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so I move to authorize Joe Halver, county coordinator, to request a paper check in the amount of twelve thousand thirty-seven dollars. This check should be made to the order of the Preston County Animal Shelter Ryan Fund. The funds are from the Preston County Commission investment account. Funds are being used exclusively for Preston County Animal Shelter, specifically for the costs associated with the purchase of HVAC for the shelter facility. Is there a second for that?
I will second.
I'm not repeating all that, however, uh, it's been properly moved and seconded to authorize Joe Halver to, uh, request a paper check in the amount of twelve thousand thirty-seven dollars uh, from the Preston County Animal Shelter Ryan Fund for the HVAC system at the animal shelter. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, just a few other short things in the maintenance update. I met with a Mr. Jim Fox from Fox Doors, and we have a few complaints about the front doors of the main entrance of the courthouse, and he will get us a quote to repair that. Also, going in the tax door, there's a closer that causes a bit bit of trouble. He will give us a quote to replace that. And also, just for the future, he will provide you all with a quote on the annex on the main entrance. The doors that are, been there for a while, they're not able to be locked with the security system in case of a panic situation or, you know, so in the, and it's just a quote so that we have some idea of what it would cost you all to replace the doors, and of course, take, there's two sets of doors there now, and we would, of course, take one set out.
Right, that is, uh, I, that is, uh, those are back doors.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then the, the, uh, the folks have to lock the doors manually at night, and they do a good job of that at the assessor's office, so this would take care of all that in the future. But just to have a price so that you all would know what you're looking at in the future. And the next thing, the little drive-through building down here is just about complete. It's been painted by the prosecutor's office and volunteers, and we provided the paint for that. And we've moved the furniture back, and we just have a little AC problem here right now, and we'll fix that really quickly. Also, we have a meeting with the guy that provides supplies for us. His name's Tom, and he is from T.T.N.S. Company, and we have a meeting with him on the seventeenth. Mr. Hoy Wiles is going to mow the nine acres across from the hospital to keep it looking nice, and also the banks going down to the nine-one-one center. He's gonna get on that really quickly. We have the bid opening June thirteenth for the ceiling of the courthouse over here. And we are going to work orders as fast as we can as they come in, and of course, Danny is doing a great job on the grass and the weed eating. And, uh, we are going to continue to work with the walls at the animal shelter as they, as we get time in our busy schedule.
Yeah, that insulation and the, yeah.
Yeah, the walls and the, the, you know, the washable surface and all that.
Uh, one thing, um, there's a lot of projects going on, um, and that's a good thing. When you were, uh, reaching out and soliciting for bids and getting quotes, um, I always just like to encourage and remind everybody that, at all possible, we need to look and see if those services are provided by Preston County businesses, because that is the guts of our tax base.
Yes, ma'am.
So please always be cognizant of that, that we give the people here the opportunity to, to come on this project.
Almost every material we have bought is from a Preston County-based company.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you all. If you have no objections, I will get back to work and go to work. Thank you, Lucy.
All right, we're gonna move on, uh, just a couple minutes behind with our nine forty appointment. Dwayne Hamilton, our O E N nine-one-one director of the budget revisions and employee hire. Good morning, Dwayne.
I don't know if I'm on the budget revision or not, or.
We do have a budget revision, yes.
The, uh, this revision, uh, is to leave money around in central garage to pay the P D A. It's forty-six hundred and forty dollars. That pays for the, uh, the, uh, we manage all the cars on there, but, you know, I asked a couple times, a lot of money, but what you, they don't realize, we used to pay enterprise six dollars a car, and that paid for the majority of this, so we're now, this is much, much more robust. System, but, you know, we don't get reports for things, it's very easy to self-generate reports and stuff. So it's paid off, much easier tracking the cars now. Everything's starting to settle down, it's getting really streamlined, so we're processing the building and everything very quickly now, so. We just have to really deal with that budget revision.
You get a motion?
I was waiting to see if we had any others.
Do we have any other budget revisions, Joe?
I've seen any that I've.
We do have another. David Hartley, yes, but. All right, we're gonna hire.
Hi, Cal, I'm gonna bring him up here. This is Andrew Bell. He has successfully, uh, successfully passed his test for the nine-one-one dispatcher, uh, has his application stuff for your own review. He comes to us, he originally is from Oklahoma, Maryland, and now over the years, I've been tearing out, and we didn't hold that against him too much.
Well, I'd say he's successfully called.
But, uh, very interested in the job, did an awesome job on his, uh, interview. I think it's, uh, it's in his family too, so, uh, we're, they're themselves. I understand you're true, we'll hire him, he'll be hired at the rate of sixteen dollars per hour with prorated benefits into their, uh, irregular full-time position, um, on June the thirteenth.
Wow, I know this young man, he's a good guy, so, uh, congratulations.
Well, I saw, heard, he got a lot of calls saying, he was a good man, so.
Yeah, he is. Uh, I, I'm, I'm moving to accept that, uh, new employee for you at the nine-one-one center.
I'm sorry.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the, you know, approve the hire of, uh, Andrew Bell. To begin June thirteenth at a rate of sixteen per hour with prorated benefits. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, next up, we have a budget revision from David Hartley, our extension agent for each family in house.
Good morning, ours, uh, how are we today?
Good morning.
We, um, just tightening up our budget, we've got three hundred from our, I don't know if you have one in front of you. Should have. Uh, anyhow, we have three hundred from our maintenance. Then repaired, went into materials and supplies, a hundred from our training and education, went into materials and supplies, and twenty-five hundred from our travel to materials and supplies to, um, updating some of our equipment, uh, in the office, as well as license software for the office. And so, um, that's what I request. So a total of, uh, twenty-nine hundred into our materials and supplies.
And I guess that, as far as.
Is that it, is that it for budget revision?
I think so.
It's okay. Anybody else? If nobody else say anything, I, at this time, I move you to approve all budget revisions that have been presented to us as a small.
And properly moved and seconded to authorize the budget revisions, one from extension, uh, and then the other from our O E N nine-one-one center. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have, and we're early, so we are going to go into just some basic business that we need to take care of. Approval of our minutes?
At this time, I like to move that we approved the minutes of May eleventh and seventeenth.
Sorry.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. P I Bs?
At this time, I'd like to move to be dispensed with the reading of the P I Bs and set them in record for May twenty-sixth, June first.
Sorry.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings in vacation uh, for May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two through June first, two thousand twenty-two, and enter them into record. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, state settlements, uh, from the clerk, uh, James Daniel Adams and Betty Lou, AKA Betty Louise Ralston.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the state settlement list, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two through May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two for Adams and Ralston. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Still have about four minutes, so we can, um, go ahead and discuss, or let's go ahead and take care of our appointment for the solid waste authority.
Oh, the old business?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we, three-point P D case to afford term on solid waste authorities or any budget. First, I'm trying to.
Sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded to reappoint P D case to a four-year term effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion for care spending today? I don't believe there is. Do you have any, Commissioner Smith?
I don't.
I didn't have anything. Okay, I didn't think so. All right, um, we'll go ahead and approve under new business. Uh, we have an application for an altering vehicle use on Preston County roads for an event, the Bishop Brothers Memorial Fund. That will take place, let's take a look here. I believe the Father's due weekend. He gave us the date, is it on eighteenth? June eighteenth, so on the past, we're just not finding it. June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the time of the event is noon. Uh, approximate number of A T Vs, two hundred. Uh, starting point, Brewston, B F W, and New Point, the same place. And it's been approved already by Sheriff Britt and the nine-one-one center. Um, just us authorize to sign the application under the approval.
I move this time that we approve this application.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize and, uh, the president to sign and approve the application for altering vehicle use on Preston County roads for the Bishop, uh, memorial fundraiser, um, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. We have just one minute. You can go ahead and move forward, um. Let's see, let's see, I don't have time to take for a minute. So with that, um, our next appointment is Elisa Kilkenny, and she is here. I didn't see you come in. Um, she is representing the Preston County Youth Center. We also have Mr. Glenn Mulrue, welcome, um, here to request some of our, our funds.
I have additional copies if anybody needs them, but we have what we guys are working on. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good. Um, first, I just wanted to go over a few things about the youth center. Um, our mission statement is, the Preston County Youth Center strives to provide a welcoming and nurturing environment focusing on empowering the youth and helping to build their futures. And in this, we're not only focused on sports, uh, we're focused on all aspects of the children's youth and development, including their emotional, spiritual, uh, physical and educational growth. So, um, we've been open for about a year, we've celebrated our first year, and, uh, throughout that year, we've served over nine hundred level families, and we've served families from Aurora, Brewston, Felsville, Klayton, Mason Town, and Woking Town. So it's not just the, the, the west side of the county that's getting served. We're, we're serving kids from, from all areas. Uh, we have provided life skills training. We offer a parents' night out every Friday night, which one of the local churches hosts. Uh, they come in and they keep the kids for about three hours. They feed them, they go over a devotional with them and have them do some kind, kind of activities, two or three activities. And that's fabulous for the parents, but, um, we have an after-school program that's offered for the kids, so, um, if the parents need additional care or the children need additional educational support, they can come into our after-school program. And we just started up with a summer program, which is the same thing. We're offering life skills, spiritual, educational learning, and they're doing all kinds of activities throughout the summer, and that also gives the opportunity for the parents to be able to enter the workforce when they have something they depend on for their children. Um, we've offered trunk, trunk or treat events. We have been a youth sports facility usage. We, um, offer practice facilities for some of the teams in Valley, as well as the new Preston Ballers, um, club and a few other ones. Uh, we've offered, uh, or we do cater to homeschooling and public groups. We have the after-school program for the public school kids, and then we have offered additional program of homeschooling kids, and we rent out the, the facility to a couple of different homeschooling groups so they can come in and get group activities and physical education as well. Uh, we rent the facility for birthday parties, which, um, opens up a whole nother venue for parents to be able to count on, to be able to go do something fun with their kids for their birthdays. Uh, we hold an open gym every Monday night, uh, for about three hours, which is, the volleyball nets are open, the basketball hoops are open, and anybody can come in and play ball. Um, pick up a game with a friend, or bring a couple in for a basketball game, or maybe whoever's somebody there. Uh, this week, we are starting on our community garden. Uh, Glenn has cleared off the land on the top of the hill, and the kids in the summer program are gonna work on helping to plant, harvest, and then at the end of the year, they'll learn how to can and prepare, preserve the foods for the year. So, um, we don't wanna turn any kids away from any program or any need that they may have, so we offer scholarships and work with, um, income so the parents don't have to worry about that, it's an issue. Um, let's see. The reason I'm here today is to talk about, um, some of the funds that we are looking for. We have already received, um, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from the Hazel River Marine Grant to finish the first floor, and that includes the floor and the basketball court, uh, the volleyball hoops, the nets, and the bleachers for the bottom floor. The top floor will be about the half of the facility, it's four thousand square foot. We received an additional three hundred and forty, two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to go towards the completion of that. Um, we still need more funding to work on that. We've received, um, five thousand dollars from Walmart, two thousand dollars from local churches was donated to offer as scholarships for the summer program. That gives, um, about two hundred kids, you know, the opportunity to come to the summer program, you know, or days without having to pay for the program. Uh, we've recent, received individual donations from people throughout the county for over thirty thousand dollars, and we have currently applied for multiple grants that we're waiting to hear back from. In addition to that, we also received funding from the events that we hold, uh, the open gyms, donations, the rentals that we have. Um, we offer classes, we're having an upcoming car show and craft show. Um, and we're looking at holding some adult sports tournaments this year, volleyball and basketball tournaments. So, um, we've received additional funding to fund our programs, you know, throughout the year from various events. And if you keep looking, uh, throughout the, um, guide, you will see what we're, what we're exactly looking for. There's the second floor architectural design, and then on that is, um, model quotes to finish off. off the area. We've got the heating and air conditioning unit that'll need to go in. Coming from, as soon as you enter the door and go up, there will be a slide and a netting and a staircase, so the children can play on the rope netting or take the slide from the second floor down. We are getting acoustical room dividers, so the top floor will have pickleball and foursquare and a different, multiple activities for seniors to be able to use, so that'll be like a walking area, the seniors can come in and do the easy games like pickleball or do the walking, and then in the afternoon, we can convert it to classrooms by holding out the acoustical room dividers. Let's see, there's also the kitchen. With serving the kids and everything there, we'd like to upgrade to a fully commercial kitchen, so the funding and the estimates and everything is in there as well. So everything is broken down on the last page, and it comes to roughly $250,000. The parking, the estimate that came in for that was $110,000 to pave the entire parking area, and we have gotten commitments from Ray C., John Ray C., and Preston Contractors to commit to that, we just don't know what the final amount of that would be, so that's kind of in there as well. And just before coming in here, we were informed that if we could match half their salary for our director, then we have a private investor or private donation who is interested and donated the other half of their salary. So, but. If you guys have any questions, or if Glenn might have had anything on something, if I missed anything, he's got all the numbers and technicalities.
The facility is a 501(c)(3) corporation, so everything's been donated, it's a community and wide board, so anything that goes into it is perpetually passed to the board community. We, if you all should be so generous to present money our way, that will be the first tax money or government money we've gotten, we haven't got absolutely nothing, everything has been privately donated, the big chunks from the landowner and Hazel River McQuain they believe in what we're doing, and they have really stepped forward. So we need, we would like to be able to finish that. This will take our facility from the footprint, it's a 200 by 80 building, and so that's 16,000 square feet, and this will bring us to 20,000 square feet of building. And this is a state-of-the-art building, it's all concrete, steel, energy efficient. February, our total utilities, sewer, water, everything, it's a little over $1,000. Yeah, you do that anywhere? It's double insulated, I mean, this thing is rock solid, so we haven't got corners, and we've done it. That's one thing that impressed Steve Farman and Hazel River McQuain, that we've got so much bank for a buck up there, and for their money, is one reason I feel that they gave us the extra to do the upper floor, because the volunteer effort and the private money that has gone into this thing, I mean, we're probably, I think, by calculations, we're like 40% cost of what a comparable building of this stature would be. And we have more land available to, you know, we've got the soccer field, we're looking at an escape park grant, another ball field, so there's many things that can be added to that, but we could easily handle like the summer program more than double. We were a little concerned as, you know, being the first time for staffing and how we do. Everything for our after-school program, so we've had four months of after-school, it's totally volunteer effort. We have churches in there with former teachers that have just done an amazing job with these kids, so total volunteer effort from 2:30 until 6:00 every day. Food provided, reading, math, we have these huge chalkboards from the university, it's amazing the difference that we've made in those kids. But everything has been totally staffed volunteer, this summer is the first time, but it's still volunteers, but we do have staff in there, but just in our experience in the first couple of weeks, we could easily handle double or triple, particularly with this upper level of the number of kids that, and that's my thing, I know the community, there's so much opportunity here for the community, but I'm a kids guy, and that's all that keeps me going, because I've been, building this thing has not been easy. And I go in, those kids, they call me grandpa, they run and jump out, I mean, the love that we share is just amazing, it can take me from this stress to wow. So anyway, that's where my heart is, I feel so blessed to be given a caring heart, and that's all these kids need. I can see one sitting over there, just, you know, by himself, and I guess sit five minutes and just, we're out. It's amazing, it's magical. So invite anyone just to stop by, if you think the world is a terrible place, stop by over there and watch these kids interacting amongst themselves, no problem, age group spreads, it's just, it's magical. I invite anyone just to stop in when you're low and feel the love of these kids, it's absolutely beyond what I had comprehended it would be, so thank you for.
Is this what you dreamed it would be?
Yes, yes, it is, it really is, maybe even more, I've worked for kids for 30 years, my kids are little, but it's a funny thing, you run into people that are really caring with their own kids, and I have been, but my kids are engineers and gone and grandkids, these are my grandkids. It's, but so many people, it's like, well, they're great into their kids, but I don't know why, I mean, God put it in me, I just always loved all kids. It's just very rewarding, and it's just the most magical thing you can do, it's just, especially, I'm a troubleshooter in my business, and I can always see trouble or problems, and I can spot a kid a mile away that just needs, me just to sit beside of them, the number of times that they'll say, will you play with me? I mean, I just, it's just amazing, and yeah, sure, I'll play with you, I'll stop whatever, I'm there building and showing them how to do things, working on the building, and then, I mean, I've stopped anything, will you throw this ball to me, or you shake me out of how to serve a volleyball, it's just little things. So the community, so many people are missing out, they just, they just come, the groups that we've had, and the former teachers are just like, wow, this is the way, you know, it should be, this real old-time school, and you've had the numbers that we can do a lot of one-on-one, we can identify who needs what, and it really shows.
Mr. Leroux, I just, from living out in that area, I drive by through there a lot, and I think it's amazing, a lot of people kind of dream in their hearts for things like this for a long time, but you took the dream in your heart and put the work effort behind it, and you pushed, and you pushed, and you've not stopped from obstacles and pushed through COVID, and so I certainly appreciate your stick-to-it-ness to continue to fight the good fight, because I'll drive by and see you on a big loader out there moving things, and then I've attended meetings that you've not missed a beat from daylight to dark and beyond, and certainly appreciate your effort in this, because without that drive behind the dream, we don't think it's accomplished, so thank you for the wonderful data and all of the things that you've put together, thank you for your time, because that's the kind of stuff we need to do.
Yeah, there's a lot of talk and meetings, but it's for all of us, I just like to get it done, and I have the inspiration to do it.
Thank you, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
It's definitely a wonderful facility out there, and Mr. Leroux would encourage anybody to stop out and take a look, there's always cars there, so, Commissioner, if you could, if we can, just Kill Kenny give you her copies, and we'll give copies to the press. And if you'll hand me the copy I made for you, don't ask me to give that to the press.
Writing on it.
Thank you. Well, here, just to get it right on.
Well, I was taking notes.
That's fine. That should be enough for them, too, I think. Okay, you got enough? Okay, perfect. Are you coming, Robby, to your community engagement meeting? Do you get one magnet, though? Thank you so much. All right, thank you for that, and thank you for your time, and Kill. All right, we will move along with our next appointment, Mr. Tim Watchering of Prodigy for Funding Assistance Contract between the Preston County Commission and the Preston County EDA for the lead programs broadband project using ARPA funding.
Okay, I requested that Tim be here today. This agreement, of course, if you remember, this is 1.7 million, approximately 1.7 million for two specific projects that will be part of cost-sharing with the state of West Virginia. One is for what we are relating to the West Preston network, and the other one is for the North Central Preston network extension. Both of these agreements are with the EDA. They have been signed off by the executive director of the EDA, in your paperwork, you will see that she has a resolution which gives her the authority to do that on their behalf, and I wanted Tim here just to make sure that if you have any additional questions. I don't think anything has changed since his original proposal. These are our internal documents that we prepared, they have been reviewed by the prosecuting attorney, and I believe we're good, they've been reviewed by Tim. We made one small change, and it was only for clarity, about submission, how we were going to release the funds. Remember, this is cost-sharing, match must be used first, so that means we have to expend the money. So he's going to be sending us what the state of West Virginia is requiring to see, which I think will suffice for us as well. He'll be getting a purchase order, presenting us a purchase order, that will commit those funds, we will release those funds so that he can get started. This particular, these agreements are from April 1 to June 30 of '23, so he needs to get started right away. So what we're asking today is that the President be authorized to sign all the documents that relate to the cost-sharing project between the Preston County Economic Development Authority and the Preston County Commission as a partner with Prodigy for the West Virginia Development Office Broadband Investment Plan Line Extension Advancement Development Program. And I ask that we authorize it to sign. And what we will do is, this is fashioned under other state grant programs, so the original documents or copy of this will be kept in three locations, in Tim's office, in the EDA, and in your office. Okay, any other questions for us?
I do, but I mean, I'm happy to do the motion to approve this, the process. That's the motion.
Okay, so the motion would be that the President be authorized to sign the Funding Assistance Contract Agreement between the Preston County Commission and the Preston County Economic Development Authority.
It's on your table, Dave, it's in.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
And if you would specify two projects, West Preston and North Central.
Okay, so let me do this right.
Okay.
My motion then would be to approve Funding Assistance Contract Agreement between the Preston County Commission and Preston County EDA for the lead programs broadband project using ARPA funding.
Authorize Western Preston.
And.
North Central Preston.
Authorize President to sign certain documents.
Now we'll see.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Funding Assistance Contract between Preston County Commission and the Preston County EDA for the lead programs broadband project using ARPA funds in the West Preston and North Central areas in the county, and authorize the President to sign. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, my question.
Yeah. Okay, so people will ask me oftentimes, especially after you've been here and we've talked about this, you know, when am I going to get it? And I don't have a clue, because I know that you work through certain areas, certain areas are covered by this money, but there's others. Give me an overview so I can give it to you.
So as Kathy said, these agreements actually were effective April 1st, and if you remember when we were here, like, oh, I've had 12 months to finish.
Back in October, yeah.
Yeah, so the clock actually began in April 1st. So not this past Friday, but the week before, we got the notice, what they call the notice to proceed from the state, which means that all this information we submitted to them was approved, and we can now move into the next, where we can begin drawing down our match money here, but we got to get this document to them in place before they can release what they call the notice to construct.
Okay.
So the notice to construct is when I can get busy, to answer your question, that is, I've got to have it done before June 30. So of that map that we put out, I've got to have it all done before next June 30, that's why the contract is through June 30.
So I vaguely remember you talking about that, because even if April had been when you started, it would have been nice, but unfortunately, no. You figured it'd be about a year, maybe just a tad over, but you thought it'd be a year to get it all done.
Yeah, I'm confident we're going to be able to meet June 30. Because we've been doing a lot of legwork already, engineers have already been doing the designing, we've been doing a lot of the pole measuring, we've got the permit straight to submit to the power company in front of you, this will allow us to do that, actually submit them, but we've got them on the engineer's desk ready to push it forward.
Is there anything that would hold that up, like the power company, the frontiers, law on approval?
Yes, and fortunately, in the years past, we were close with the state legislation, they get what they call the one-touch make ready in place, so by the time we submit the notes to them and pay the application fees, they've got basically 45 days to do their work, and thought we can do the work on their behalf. So that was a huge broadband bill that we got passed that'll help us and aid us in getting the fiber in the air, but, and we've got some areas that we've already strategically marked out that we can, I mean, there is no make ready, once we get the green light and notice to construct, we're going to be starting them right away with the fiber in the air.
How will people know?
I mean, I always tell people, when you see our trucks in the area.
I was going to say, but you said that for them, you see the truck, you'll know.
When you see the trucks in the area, you know we're getting close, and you all give us a call.
There'll be some identification of property.
Yeah, and then we're going to continue, I think we discussed it back in October, we'll put out on our website the interactive maps that they'll show, all right, this is under construction, this is now active, et cetera.
Really?
Just for.
Refer them to that.
Yep.
I guess Kathy knows that, so we can answer that question.
Social media is big, so we'll push that out on social media, and then, where math is big.
Well, for clarity, a couple of things, there is a year extension available in ARPA, and just in case there might be a snafu or anything in our contract, it does allow some flexibility on that. And the second thing is, I want to be specific about the amounts of money for the press and for the minutes. On the West Preston project, the amount you're getting in ARPA funds is $803,500, and for the North Preston, North Central Preston, $870,500. That's just for clarity. Anything else for us?
No, we've signed everything we need to do, and our mission's done, right?
I'm already done.
Do you have a staff crew, or are these people going to generate new jobs if you hire people to go all this out?
So, quick question, we've already got contractors secured, and they're setting one go, ready. We've already got contractors secured, and they're setting, we'll go, ready to begin. We will also do some of the work with our in-house construction teams and installation teams. We've already hired, as a result of these grants, we've already hired four additional people. That was full-time, and we were able to do a lot of this preliminary work, pole measuring, monitoring, et cetera. So yes, we've got the workforce to do what we need.
Great.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sure you can support. Thanks, Mr. Hall.
All right, well, that's some good news, and some good news to come. I guess that brings us down to your presentation.
I have a couple of things to be able to discuss. Definitely, starting next week, you'll have your county coordination report. Just a couple of things, House committee matter. We did provide you a, to add Mr. Hall, to designate to use your stamps for your correspondence and other things. I mentioned the West Banko Trust, that we're going to make that change today. Do you remember where else I was supposed to? I think you have the rest, don't you?
I think I do.
This is very interesting, very good.
Well, I guess we can formally introduce, now that you've officially taken your position effective June 1, this is our new county coordinator, Mr. Joseph Haller. He will be representing the county commission and doing all of our daily tasks.
I do have one other thing, excuse me. We did get notification that the Preston County Helping Day EMS Association, it looks like that they're going to be successful in attempting to get funding for EMT training through our new relationship with the state. So that was really very good news. We hope to have that, I believe it's through July. So good news on that front. Okay, Joe, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Here we go. Just a few updates for the commissioners. First of all, let you know that at 10:00 AM tomorrow, we are going to be having a meeting on the courthouse lawn of the Veterans Plaza Committee. Work out some final details, and expecting to have work on that project starting later this month. Of course, at 2:00 PM on Friday, at the election center, we will be having the ARPA community meeting. We have sent invites out to everyone who has submitted materials so far. We're going to continue to publicize that through the week. We have received a couple of pieces of correspondence from the public on general suggestions of how to use funding. And we are expecting through tomorrow to get at least a few more official proposals. I will have a summary and list ready for you shortly thereafter, and we'll have all the information available to you on Friday. On Saturday, June 11, reminder that the memorial ride for Private Zack Riffle will be taking place, and that is to start at 9:30. I believe that the midway point that they will be stopping in Kingwood, and they are expected to have a brief thing around their morning meal at the courthouse lawn, expecting to ring the bell. I believe that's all been taken care of.
Just give me a little input, that's, you know, the gentleman. He said they're actually, he'll get there at 12:30, get everything recorded, and then they're starting their thing on the line.
They are, okay. I was working on field information.
Do we have set in place to get the handle on the bell, so that's all taken care of?
Yes. Yes, it's sitting right there by the door in the office, ready to go. All right. Next week, we will be having the courthouse facilities bid opening at 10:00 AM during the meeting. And that will be followed at 10:30 by the bid opening for the vehicle and possibly the award discussion at that point. Now, work session. Would the commissioners need a work session through this month? Because we're looking at.
We have one scheduled for today.
Yes.
I know that Commissioner Price would be down on the 28th.
Yeah, just one day.
So we were looking at the 21st, on the 14th, at the 21st, and then perhaps July 5th. Do we have topics?
That's what we're asking.
Okay.
Okay, we're just open, so let's all kind of brainstorm on that and come back with our thoughts on that. Today may lead to another one.
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll put those as, trying to keep your agenda compact so that you're available about 10:30, 11 o'clock to have those.
Good.
On both those dates, correct, 21 and 5?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
21 and 5?
July 5th.
Days out of town, 28.
Right, I knew that, I just wanted to make sure I heard right.
Okay, start with Joe.
Sure. And the only thing I have left is update you. We are, we have the IT my chair person here today, so he is going to work on getting me linked in with all of the social media accounts, the website, what have you, so we will be able to get moving on. Especially like with the ARPA meeting, that these things need to be out there to the public, that we can at least give them another option for access to county information. And I believe that is what I have of the commissioners. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions, Dave? All right.
Oh, we do have a question. I mean, it's really not a question, it's a call. We had discussed, there was a time, is everybody aware that it's a two-hour limit?
It is.
So like drag it on.
Yes, we're, yeah, we're expecting a two-hour limit, and as many people as we can get to speak. We have so many of the proposals already, we're familiar with the numbers. If they want to advocate, great. They have originals, fine, if they can get us the information ahead of time. We're not, you know, we're not sure how many people are going to attend the meeting, so we're asking that the presentations be limited to three minutes.
Do we have the social media posts set to go concerning the information that information?
As soon as I can.
Get with, okay.
Get the access, we will get that.
All right, great. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, I'd like to mention something.
Sure.
Since our new coordinator is here, I would like to congratulate Kathy Plumb on assuming the awesome duties of being a reporter and editor of Preston County News and Journal.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're happy.
It's ingrained in me to say ha-ha on everything. But I won't do that, I'm a story. We're getting back together here. All right, Hunter, you can lead us in a song, come on. All right, Commissioner comments, Dave? Do you have anything about today? Did I catch you off guard, Commissioner Price?
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Sorry, do you have anything, Dave? We're at that part of the agenda, I promise.
Yeah, I know, we're okay. I have nothing on our work session today. I would mention a couple of things that, outside of this work session, that I've been talking with or attempting to talk with, in some cases, other counties who are, whose boards of education, CTE departments, have already have up and running some really good EMT courses. And so I've been trying to get a little bit of information with that. As the state of West Virginia has now recognized the drastic need and shortage of EMDs, paramedics, for our first responders, they are stepping up now to help train. And I expect that they would step up to help implement some training in school. You know, if a student does well with an EMT training in school, they can begin to work and earn good money now as an EMT. And so we're going to encourage the Preston County Board of Education to be serious about having this program next year, not in three years, next year. And next Monday's a work meeting, and I think that there would be somebody at that meeting to ask for that, probably me. But anybody else that wants to help with that, that's fine. But anyway, that's, I think that's an excellent thing. Pocahontas County, Hampshire County, two of them, and Mon County, they've got a program. So it's helping. Rollsburg Ambulance is an example, real quick here. Rollsburg Ambulance has gotten their new licensure for the coming year. They renewed, everything's good, they're ready to run, they're ready to pay EMTs to be a transport unit for all these places like Windy Hill, and Pine Ridge, Oaklawn, and Preston Memorial occasionally are needing someone to assume these things. And so if they could get some applicants at Rollsburg Community Ambulance Service Group, the hours will be great, you know, not midnights and things like that. Most of the hours will be daytime, weekdays. And so good opportunity for somebody who is an EMT to pick up a good job. That's all. Thank you.
No. All right, Commissioner Smith, do you have anything you'd like to?
Yeah, I have a couple meetings this week, apart from the meeting of the ARPA thing, and a NICO Veterans Committee meeting Thursday, that's about, but. And then Friday morning, I have a meeting over at the workforce of West Virginia, it's a quarter of the meeting. And that's really, it's a big time, so.
I do have one other thing. The, recently, I addressed at the interims in Morgantown to talk about the jail bills and some relief on the jail bills. And I spoke to legislators, both Senate and House members of that committee. And as a result of that, I believe that they have formed a group that will be working on suggestions to help.
They have, yes.
Yes, and well, I know, and I'm one of them. And our first meeting is this week, as we come together to discuss ways that we can save some money and maybe cut the jail bills a little bit, or what needs done, other than increasing. And, because that would really be tough. You know, you look at the jail bill and you think, okay, how far would this go for our EMS program if we didn't have to pay a million dollars a year for the jail bill?
I would like to speak to the regional jail judge just for a moment, because as we approach the end of the fiscal year, I can say that that our regional jail bill certainly will come within budget. And also that, I believe that there are a couple of new avenues put in place thanks to the regional jail system that has really helped us with the tracking. You know, lots of times you will have someone that is offended here, but in another county, perhaps in another jail. They're now getting a Monday report, which I really think has really helped with where they belong and who should be charged. So I do want to give, you know, we're all down on the regional jail system, but I really, really believe that these new weekly reports and the reporting mechanism that they're using is really helping us identify who should be paying for that prisoner.
All those things play into how that could cut a number.
And I did want to say something positive about them.
I think it's positive that they have put this group together, and he.
And included county commissioners, because they used to be excluded, so.
That's exactly right, that's a big deal. And maybe some mental health folks and some other people that can address that part of the jail bill problem. So as a result, I'm just tickled that the chairman of that committee decided to do it and wanted me to be a part of it for a whole while, so. That's a good thing.
I'm trying to think when I did this. About two weeks ago now, I attended scholarship interviews in Garrett County, Maryland, where we were interviewing high school seniors that were trying to qualify for some scholarship money. And we did select some people, but during the interviews, I kept hearing the seniors talk about a program that they had completed, and it was called Work Ethic Diploma. And so I was very intrigued by that, asked a few questions after we were done with the other people that are locals up there, and was put in contact with their Chamber of Commerce. Their Chamber of Commerce partners with, I believe, their commission and the Board of Education up there. And this workforce diploma is something that the kids must achieve, just like your regular diploma, but area businesses in Garrett County that belong to the Chamber participate in the program. And if the students achieve and get this workforce diploma, they then qualify with the businesses that are partnered with the Board of Ed and the Chamber. They get 50 cents more on the hour when they go into the workforce at those certain businesses that participate in the program. So I wanted more information on it. I did collaborate a meeting that took place yesterday with Kristi Ash, our Chamber Director, and she attended the meeting with their Chamber Director yesterday. It was a great meeting. Kristi's going to be coordinating things with our Board of Ed and her workforce group that she needs to be working with to see if we can get the ball rolling for something like that in the county here. I believe wholeheartedly that COVID kind of drove home the work ethic of, you know, young people. And it's something that we really need to focus on to start rebuilding our workforce on the ground. And I think it would be such a great program to participate in for multiple reasons. And I just think that we need something else. And I believe it would really start and head home in our CTU programs at the high school. I think that could be a great thing. We know we struggle here finding, you know, masons and electricians and different things like that, yes.
And would it be worth mentioning, too, the voluntary drug-free status in there?
Oh, absolutely, and this is all in its infancy, and Kristi's working diligently to get everything. And I just think it just fell into place at the right thing. You know, sometimes you're in the right place at the right time, and she's been looking for something, and I was like, oh my gosh, you know? And so had I not agreed to go and do that up there, we wouldn't have had the seed planted. And so I just appreciate those opportunities that I get by my platform as a commissioner, because those are the types of things that we just need to continue to move forward on. So, you know, thanks to Kristi for making, you know, got the meeting facilitated in a quickly manner, and it needed to be done very quickly, because the meeting that she's having is happening this week, and so it just fell into place. So stay tuned for more information on that.
One item before you adjourn is, we had hoped to give a presentation today about the need for server, for your camera system. And unfortunately, Brad had an illness and his family couldn't attend today. So we will be presenting, since next week is your final week for budget revisions, this is, this item is a significant cost, I'd say it's around $40,000. And the reason the need for it, because I want you to be prepared for the need for it, is need for it, because I want you to be prepared for the need for it, is we, the cameras are used specifically in the sheriff's office, many times for a case, a couple of things. The equipment that you have, the DVR system that you currently have is very limiting, and we need to be able to expand our ability to download camera video, especially in your sheriff's department. So with the new things and with the cloud and all those kind of things, technology changes really fast. We're going to bring a presentation to you on that. Brandon can tell you the lingo, I can't, but I want you to be prepared for it. And also, the significance of this is it's something for 911 as well as for the sheriff and as well as for your other buildings. So something that we do need to consider moving forward with your camera system. We're going to have to purchase the DVRs, they're at their end of their life expectancy, so rather than make a lateral move, I think this will really help you out significantly, especially. And along with that, we want to present policies and procedures of how you request video internally and externally, so that there's a good chain when people ask for that kind of data. So those, we hope to have those ready for you for next week.
We need to do that in this budget.
Yes, sir. We need to do that in this budget. That's why we need to get, Joe and I will work together there to get you a place. We will be working on looking at new budgets to make sure that there's no, we don't need to move any money around, I don't think something jumping out of the page right now, but just a reminder that all budget revisions for this particular fiscal year are due next week. This will be last week before we're budget revisions that you approve purchase orders for this budget. Also, PCOR data is due at the end of the week, and I can't believe we'll wrap it up another year, but we're certainly headed in that direction, so.
I'd like to mention a fellow that walked in for our work session, Tim Kelly, our accounting person, working diligently with the EMS and the advisory, a member of the advisory group that is working out solutions to help with the EMS growth and changes and support and everything, so you're here to be the numbers guy. So, Tim, we appreciate you giving all your time.
The Kingwood pipe paving is complete. All they have to do is paint the lines, I believe, so it's definitely very smooth and wonderful and much-needed break to your eye teeth bouncing out of your head as you travel while you're busting tires. Hopefully the state road will, the Department of Transportation will consider doing it the rest of the way to Morgantown because it's down to the county line. So hopefully, you know, hopefully they'll continue that. The other thing is I received a meeting, and I was super intrigued by it, I guess is the right word. I can pull it up here real quick. I've come across the email, it was from the Department of Transportation. Here we go. "The Department of Transportation is seeking input to help guide the future of transportation in West Virginia. West Virginia Department of Transportation is in the process of developing a new six-year statewide transportation improvement program. The 2023 through 2028 STIF is what they call that, statewide transportation improvement program, identifies project investments over a six-year period to fund the operation, preservation, rehabilitation, and expansion of West Virginia highways and transit assets statewide with the revenue that is estimated to be available." So I believe that is a workshop that I will definitely be in on, and is taking place on June 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., public to review information for future funding levels. We know here in Preston County that the funding level that we have in our district is not good enough, and we always fall short. And so I believe this might be a good platform to advocate. I'm going to reach out to our state representatives here for our county and our district to make sure that they are aware of this, because this might be a time that we can maybe get those numbers looked at real hard, to get additional funding so that our maintenance, so that we cannot be faced with the excuse of, oh, we burned up our maintenance money and went to a wilderness.
Well, and this is before, it's got to be, even if they don't stay with it, it's got to be helpful.
So we just have to stay on top of those things and take those opportunities when we can be a voice there. And I have one other thing. I just received a message from Kristi Ash asking us to update on the state of the county, and so I'm just going to remind everyone, and then we can discuss it a little bit. The state of the county is Thursday, June 16th, at the Byer Community Building here in Kingwood on Brown Avenue from 5:00 to 6:00, there's a social hour, and then 6:00 to 8:00 is the state of the county, where you will be hearing from your elected officials, state, elected officials will be talking, the county commission will be represented. I'm sure there will be representation from Prodigy, from the Economic Development Authority, from other areas in the county that will give a good update. And so within that request, they also...
It was a request for funding.
Yes, a request for funding, and we just need to maybe decide if we can contribute to that event.
I think that you certainly could indicate to them that you're committing the money. It probably would be, if you want to, I mean, I don't know that we funded that in the past, it's certainly within your preview to contribute to that. It was mentioned in your administrative report that you would be attending, so I'm not sure what you're looking at contribution wise.
I don't know either.
I think it's really good, and the fact that they do have coverage there so that it is streamed and can be available to people that cannot attend, I think it's good to get the information out that they're funding. Funding levels, where a gold sponsor is $1,000, silver is 500, the bronze is 250.
I can assure you that you have any of those amounts in your contributions to outside agencies at this close date to your end of fiscal year, you have any of those amounts that would be available.
So that could be on the agenda for next week?
Well, the event's on 16th. I think we need to commit. What's it due? You can commit the money if you'd like to, and I'm just assuring you that any of those amounts that you might choose, you're well within your budget.
Okay.
It might be more appropriate, since it is not an agenda item for you to let the Chamber of Commerce know that you will be making a monetary contribution, and let them know that, and let them have an idea of what you're thinking, but you will take official action on that next week.
Right, that's kind of where I was coming from.
Joe, can you facilitate that email and send it back to Kristi, please, versus me?
And if you could give Mr. Holger an idea which way you're leaning, what amount you're leaning, just so Kristi has an idea of what you're committing, of what you're considering.
You know, when this started, I attended one in Garrett County.
I remember.
And I had never heard of it or anything, and I went to their breakfast with the chamber, and that was the state of the county. And when I came back, I said, how great is that? It was pretty good, didn't it? But it was really nuts and well-attended, and so I'm glad that it's still going on over here.
So why don't we just have Mr. Holger tell Kristi that they can count on a contribution from the Preston County Commission, and we'll take official action. Please do that. Let her know today, because she actually sent me a text message saying she hadn't gotten any response back. So, all right. With that, I don't believe I have anything else today to discuss, and we will go ahead and adjourn and take a five-minute recess and come back into our work session. Thank you for that. Tim, did you have anything that you wanted to pass out to the members?
Yes. Do you have a copy?
I did not. Really?
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, sure.
Okay. We've got the copier here, so that...
I'll take one of those. Also, did you have any information from Matt on the local structures? Did you have to get a copy of that?
From who?
Matt. He's a guy, a software guy that we've been working with with local structures, because I've had, I provided that to the commissioners, so I'll provide that to you.
Yeah, no, I do not.
Hey, Henry, who wants a copy of this work session stuff? We'll give this, thank you, it's a little make-up.
Good also as well?
First of all, I wanted to put this kind of computer system, all the stuff, one account and say they're all suspended, everyone's suspended. So I have one, I have the attention to get out of the comments. I can't get much of yours.
Ah.
Okay. I have a two o'clock meeting today, I'll be in town tomorrow morning, I have to do a new work, and then I'll be at the DVA office at 9:00.
I'm assuming that you come here.
After the morning, would that work?
End stream, right?
All right, I'll just name you that.
Yes.